Good evening. For those of you that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Easiness, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us this our trust in Christ, so that we may be forgiven, and washed in the blood of his holy name. We use not in the name of temptation, but for the good of the people. The highest of kings, with power and glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the June 7th legislative session for the Wycomico County Council. First item on the agenda is approve the minutes from the May 17, 2016 legislative session. All those in favor of the minutes from May 17, say aye.
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 You need a motion?
I'm sorry. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any corrections? Seen on, all those in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried. Minutes have approved. Entertained a motion to -- I'm off base tonight.
Want to start over?
Yeah, I do.
Is that a father?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thanks. Pledge of Easiness. Second item on the agenda is approve the open work session from minutes from May 17 in reference to poultry houses. Any entertained a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seen on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Minutes accept. Entertained a motion to accept work session minutes from May 17 in reference to the Board of Education work session.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Any corrections, additions? Seen on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried. Minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the closed work session, May 17.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seen on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved and minutes have been accepted. At this time, we now have a proclamation to read at the podium over here. It's for the Young Entrepreneurs Academy panel winners. Is Adit Abraham, is that correct? And is Benyam Efrem here tonight?
Not yet.
He's not here? Okay. Do we expect him?
He's on his way.
All right.
Well, we can go ahead. We know you have a busy evening.
Let me go through the resolutions first. When he gets in here, you let us know. Okay? Mr. Kramer, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the County Council, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin, would make note that at the request of the County Executive Resolution Number 62 has been withdrawn from this evening's agenda for consideration at a later date. If I may continue?
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 57, 2016, to engage independent legal counsel pursuant to Section 304(c) of the Wycomico County Charter. The County Council made by resolution engages the services of independent legal counsel to aid in its inquiries, investigations, or drafting of codification of legislation, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 57, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
I guess the second paragraph where it says the County Council has determined that in the absence of an appointed county attorney, it is necessary to obtain legal services. We're not in the absence of a county attorney because Mr. Culver has hired a county attorney, but apparently the council's not recognizing that county attorney. Shouldn't that wording be changed?
Mr. Holloway, the language says, "absence of an appointed county attorney,"
and that appointment has not been confirmed by the County Council, nor has it been submitted
to County Council for confirmation. So that's -- the language is technically correct.
Any other questions? Seen on, all those in favor of Resolution 57, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 58, 2016, at the request of the County Executive to dedicate the Wettipkin Bridge to Edward Theodore Taylor.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 58, 2016.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to recognize Mr. Taylor in the room tonight. Mr. Taylor, how are you? Good to see you.
Would you care for him to join Mr. Dodd at the podium? Or is Mr. Dodd going to leave?
Certainly may. Certainly may.
Come on up, Mr. Taylor. Good to see you. It gives me great pleasure to introduce this young man today. I served on the County Council with him from 2002 to 2006, and he was a lifelong resident of the county. He worked for the sheriff's office for some time, retired from the Wycomico County Board of Education, and served 12 years on the County Council. In that area, Wettipkin was his home. The bridge was falling apart. There were several petitions around. Some people wanted it level. Some people wanted it six feet. Some people wanted it 12 feet. But Mr. Taylor wanted a bridge there. Mr. Taylor told me stories about pulling the ferry across when he was a kid, right before he went away to the military. Was it Korea?
Korea.
And he came back, and the bridge was falling apart, so he led an effort to get this bridge rebuilt. And I was on the County Council with him, and I had the opportunity to serve, and I supported him. And we couldn't give this to a better man. After the council of 2006, I hadn't seen him in a while until about three years ago, when I was a patient at Chesapeake Rehab Hospital. My roommate was Larry Taylor, and I didn't put two and two together until he walked in the room. So I was in there almost a month with his brother. He was a patient at Chesapeake Rehab Hospital. So we reunited then, and it's good to see him again tonight. So let me read this resolution, if I may. I brought my glasses today. Resolution Number 58, 2016, introduced by the President of the Council at the request of the County Executive. A resolution to dedicate the Wettipkin Bridge to Edward Theodore Taylor, whereas Mr. Taylor, Mr. Edward Theodore Taylor, was born in the rural village of Wettipkin located in Wycomico County, Maryland; and whereas Mr. Taylor has played a lifelong role in improving the community of his birth; and whereas Ed Taylor served on the County Council for 12 years as a District 1 representative; and whereas Mr. Taylor, understanding the impact of a potential closure of the deteriorated bridge would have on the residents and businesses in the community, he led a support for funding to replace the Wettipkin Bridge at a cost of $2.1 million with 80 percent federal funding and only 20 percent coming from the county. Whereas the County Council and the County Executive recognize and appreciate the devotion and persistent efforts of Edward Theodore Taylor toward gaining approval by the Wycomico County Council for the construction of the new Wettipkin Bridge. Now therefore, it be resolved by the County Council of Wycomico County, Maryland, that the Wettipkin Bridge shall be dedicated to Ed Taylor, Edward Theodore Taylor, and a permanent plaque be mounted on the Wettipkin Bridge in his honor. Done this day, Ed Salisbury, Maryland, the 7th day of June 2016. Thank you.
I would like to thank you for this privilege, just being here to the meeting tonight. I like to come up here now and then, but you can understand, being here 12 years, you don't come back too much. You try to catch up the things that you missed during that 12-year period, and that's what I've been doing. I've been writing books, and I've been traveling all over the country promoting my books. And many of you have purchased my books, and I thank you for that. But I thank you for this privilege, more importantly to me, to smell the roses while I may.
Thank you, Councilman Doug Culver. All those in favor of Resolution 58, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried. Resolution passes.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 59, 2016, at the request of the County Executive approving a transfer between major categories of the Wycomico County Board of Education operating budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016, transferring a total of $142,167. If you have any questions, I believe Mr. Ford from Control of the Board of Education is here.
All right, Mr. Kramer. Before I entertain that motion, I understand that Mr. Efrem is here and Mr. Abraham is here. Am I correct? Okay. We're going to read a proclamation first, okay? Join us at the podium. Your parents are invited to join us if they'd like. We have a proclamation to read tonight. The Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce does an excellent job in Wycomico County. Part of the focus of the Chamber of Commerce is the same focus as Wycomico County and everyone in Wycomico County, not just the council, and that is economic development. Part of that is entrepreneurship, and you're looking at some of the finest examples of entrepreneurship tonight. These are the winners of the Young Entrepreneurs Academy, and these are proclamations for both of the gentlemen here. I'll read the proclamation, then I'll give them an opportunity to speak if they'd like. This is proclamation. It is with great pleasure that the Wycomico County Council and the County Executive congratulate Adit -- I didn't do it right there.
Adit.
Adit, thank you. Adit Abraham and Benyam Efrem, Young Entrepreneurs Academy panel winners. Whereas the Young Entrepreneurs Academy is a six-month after-school program organized by the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce for middle and high school students; and whereas students identify their passions and transform their ideas into fully-formed and functioning businesses or social movements; and whereas on March 30, 2016, local students pitched their business ideas in hopes of receiving startup funding to launch their businesses; and whereas Adit Abraham and Benyam Efrem were selected to receive startup funds in the amount of $825, as well as in-kind gifts for the business Velo Apps. And whereas Velo Apps, is that correct?
Velo.
Velo Apps, thank you. And whereas Velo Apps is an app development company with smartphone app Rutine as its main product, Rutine helps users achieve a goal by breaking it down into a series of steps. And whereas Velo Apps will advance to the regional competition in New York to compete against 100 other Young Entrepreneurs Academy students. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the County Executive hereby congratulate Adit Abraham and Benyam Efrem as Young Entrepreneurs Academy panel winners, and encourage all citizens to congratulate them on this accomplishment done this 7th day of June 2016. So thank you. If you'd like to say, make a comment, feel free.
This is also part of that business process.
You're very good at public speaking.
Well, I didn't really know we were going to give a speech, so I'm sorry if this isn't really the best speech you've ever heard, but to start off, I'd like to thank the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce for giving us this opportunity. Both Ben and I always wanted to start a business, but Young Entrepreneurs Academy is the thing that pushed us over the edge. And along with that, I'd like to thank our parents and our mentors for guiding us, and Sophia especially, for helping us get through the whole process. Starting a business has not been easy, but I can definitely say that they have done everything they can to make it easier for us. Thank you all.
I'm not as composed of a speaker as Adit, so sorry, guys. Yeah, I second what Adit says. Thank you to the chamber. Thank you to Sophia and all of the people who conducted the class, who supported us. If there's one thing I learned, that it's that you have to go out and get what you want. Doing business, it's very infectious, because we started this app company, and now Adit's trying to start his own side thing, and I'm trying to start my own consulting business for marketing on social media, Instagram specifically. And I'm cold calling people, you know, like 30 people a day during school. And people in school, they're just eating their lunch. I'm doing cold calls, being like, hi, this is Ben. And it's very emotionally draining and frustrating, but when you get used to it, you're just used to going through the process and doing what it takes to get what you want. And it teaches you to not be passive and just expect the world to give you something. It expects you -- it makes you expect a standard from yourself of putting the work in and then, from there, reaping the rewards. Thank you.
Mr. President, shall we continue with Resolution Number 59, 2016?
Mr. Kramer, I think they both did a better job of public speaking than I have.
Well, you said that, sir.
Yes, I did. Thank you. We're good.
Resolution Number 59, 2016, do I need to read it again?
Entertained a motion to introduce Resolution 59, 2016. So moved. Sorry.
And Mr. Ford is here, if you have any questions.
Motion is second. Mr. Ford? How are you, sir? Good evening. Good, good. And, Mr. Ford, we have another guest with us tonight. Pleasure to see you here. How are you?
Thank you.
You let the public know who you are with the microphone there.
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Wallson. I'm the Director of Special Education for Wycomico County Schools.
Mrs. Wallson did an excellent presentation with Dr. Fredrickson's retirement, and no one will ever let her forget it. Thought maybe it was going to be summer tonight, but, okay. Mr. Ford, we'll let you begin.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Thank you, council members, for this opportunity to make this presentation and answer any questions that the council may have. Thanks to the endorsement of the County Executive, Mr. Culver, this resolution is before you tonight to request the recognition of an anticipated state aid in the amount of $142,167 from the state for non-public placements. And the board has requested, and the County Executive has endorsed us appropriating those funds to the category of special education for the purpose of paying the non-public placement invoices.
Okay. Questions from council?
I have one. Mr. Ford, do you want to explain what non-public placement is?
That's why I brought my good friend, Mrs. Bonnie Wallson.
Non-public placements are educational and residential institutions that provide education and therapy services for students with disabilities who cannot be educated within the public school systems. They are located throughout the state of Maryland and throughout the United States. They are available as one of the placements for a continuum of service for those students that are found eligible as students with disabilities. Generally, those students are those that have very severe and intense disabilities, specifically focusing on those students with autism, those that have emotional and behavioral disorders and/or disabilities, or those that are multiply handicapped. And the care and education and supplemental services for them are more than what the public school can provide. And the decision for that non-public placement is made by an IEP team, a team including the parent, the psychologist, the general educator, the special educator, the administrator of the school, and often the student as a part of that. And that decision is made that we can no longer meet their educational needs, and we have to seek other placements for them in order to receive an appropriate education. It is the law under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
And this is regardless of how much that placement costs, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Could you break down how much the county pays and how much the state pays?
Yes, good question. There is a formula that's dictated by state law that says each local educational agency will pay what is known as the 300 percent figure. And for fiscal year 16, air 300 percent, air meaning Wycomico County Public Schools 300 percent figure, $20,684. So that's step one. And then, any amount in excess --
Per student?
Per student.
Total?
Per student. Per student. Per placement.
Per placement.
In excess of that $20,684, we then also have to pick up an additional 30 percent of the remainder. And anything in excess of the 300 percent and the 30 percent of the remainder, that's what the state picks up. So, to give you an example, this fiscal year, we will be paying of the $535,000 projected expense for non-public placements this year, air share will be $288,600, and the state will contribute $247,000.
And, you know, I see student A, student B. How many students, it's a little unclear, how many students are actually in placement? I mean, how much, you know, is, how many students are in placement?
Currently, there are 10 that you see listed there, that the Board of Education is responsible for their education. And that number, Mr. Kilmer, fluctuates. It could be 11 today. It just depends upon the unique needs of that student, and when a meeting is held, and the decision of that IEP team.
Any other questions? The question I would have is, you're saying the institutions are throughout the state, but obviously the students are residents of Wycomico County?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. I need to do good work. Any other questions? I need a second. Good night. You might be here for a while. All those in favor of Resolution 59, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried. Resolution passes. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next resolution for your consideration is Number 60, 2016, at the request of the County Executive granting Old Town Builders Incorporated a tax exemption for real property taxes for fiscal years 2011 through 2016, including an advertising fee in the amount of $2,275.43. The Morris Mill Dam located off College Avenue is in need of repair. And you will recall a work session wherein it was presented to council that acts a right of way easement to be able to do the work on the dam as needed. This exemption is for a remnant of a piece of property. It's not a building lot. It's an unused and inaccessible portion. Mr. Young is here to answer any other questions you may have.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 60, 2016?
So moved.
Second? Second. Are there any questions from council?
We went over this in a work session.
We've been over it, yes. All right. All those in favor of Resolution 60, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried. Resolution passes. Thank you for being here, Mr. Young.
Though you may need him yet.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kramer?
Next is Resolution Number 61, 2016, at the request of the County Executive approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Salisbury, Maryland and Wycomico County, Maryland for Sharp's Point dredge material placement site usage. And that's where Mr. Young may come in.
Mr. Young, you'll join us. Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 61, 2016.
Second. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm doing well. So this particular memorandum of understanding is between the City of Salisbury and Wycomico County. The City of Salisbury is interested in dredging the creek in the park. They estimate to produce 850 cubic yards of material, and they need to locate a property to properly dispose of this dredge material. The county owns the Sharp's Point dredge site, and typically when we talk about dredge sites or the lack thereof, it's for the lower portion of the Wycomico River. The Sharp's Point dredge site is for the upper portion of the Wycomico River and has capacity. This MOU is almost verbatim similar to what we use with Chesapeake Shipbuilding when they do maintenance dredging at their facility. Same thing, they need a legal place to dispose of the dredge material. This 850 cubic yards of proposed material, the rate that we have charged, again, similar to Chesapeake Shipbuilding, is $15 per cubic yard, so it would be about a little over $12,000 of revenue. Again, we have space in this dredge spoil site, and it's assisting the City of Salisbury. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions from council?
What is the capacity of Sharp's Point?
You know, that's, I don't know the specific cubic yards, but I know we have, I want to say, four or five more dredge cycles available. There is property surrounding it that could be utilized for an expansion. So dredge cycle is typically two to three years, so we have, I'll say, 10 years plus capacity.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Will that be trucked? Material be trucked?
Yes. They'll be using line dump trucks to keep the material, rather than when we dredge the Upper River, it's a pumping mechanism. This will be carried in trucks, just like Chesapeake Shipbuilding.
No questions? All those in favor of Resolution 61, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried. Resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution 62 is withdrawn next for your consideration, Number 63, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the contractual services gypsy moth control account in the amount of $5,925.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 63, 2016?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Are there any questions? Seen on, all those in favor of Resolution 63, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried. Resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 64, 2016, introduced by the President of the County Council at the request of the County Executive to levy and impose a property tax for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, ending June 30, 2017, to provide for the payment of a service charge by a property owner under a semi-annual payment schedule setting a tax rate for real and personal property and providing for the collection of property tax.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 64, 2016?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions from council?
Finance Director, Ms. Leslie Lewis, is here, if you have questions.
Any questions? Seen on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motions carried. Resolution passes.
Resolution Number 65, 2016, at the request of the County Executive, approving the schedule of fees and charges for services provided by the Wycomico County Department of Parks and Recreation and Tourism for various programs. They are listed in the resolution. If you wish, I will read them. Mr. Miller is here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 65, 2016?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Miller, how are you? Good evening. If you gentlemen could just let us know who you are for If you gentlemen could just let us know who you are for the public?
Absolutely. Steve Miller, Director for Recreation, Parks and Tourism.
Andy Kitcher, Recreation Superintendent.
Okay. I think the reason this, we wanted to see this come with the council, sort of as a motion. Initially, it was in the budget. And we apologize for not reviewing that when you came before us the last time in the budget session. I know in my review, it skipped my oversight. And I know how, having been on the commission a few years back, how important it was to a lot of the members there and members in the community, that when fees were raised, that, you know, everyone made sure that it was absolutely necessary to do such. So we thought we'd at least meet face-to-face to just go over some of the increases and what you felt the justifications were. Does council have any specific questions on fees in particular? Councilman Dodd?
Yes, sir. Some of the discussion during our budget session was about the fee increase. And I was wondering, I haven't had a team in local sports lately. My kids have been playing in other teams. But I've been wondering if this is comparable to other places. I'm not going to mention any names, but, because I know a couple of years ago, we had people saying they were going to Western County to play because we raised our fees back then. So I just want to make sure that these are comparable to...
Yes, if you're referring to our soccer team fee that was going from 300 to 350, it is a comparable fee. The reason for the increase in that is the schedule of the season is increasing by two games. Two years ago, when it was 12 games, it was 395. We cut games to eight, so we went to 300. And we're now moving it back up to 10 games from the direction of our soccer federation. So we've increased 50% because of that cut. So it's a sliding scale based off of what they're receiving for the season.
And it costs more to pay the refs?
That is a separate piece, that's not included in this. But it's for the field usage, the site supervising, all of the other things that go along when you add into length of a season. Light fees, all of that.
How many teams do you have for a typical registration for a season in soccer?
For team entry, in regard to this price, we're looking at about 12 to 15 teams.
And how to be throughout the county?
Throughout the Wycomico County Public Program. We, bulk of our participants sign up as individuals, and we assign them volunteer coaches.
But now, I was talking about the fields where they would be playing.
Most of the games are played at the complex, but-
Naylor Mill.
Naylor Mill, but we are actually using our outlining fields, too, for home fields this season. We've gone back to that model. If there's teams who are requesting to have home fields, Sharp Town, Gene Low, and et cetera, we will honor that.
Mr. Kitcher, do you want to explain why we have a 15% increase at Camp Inners?
Yes, Camp Inners increase. We have increased the salaries incrementally at Camp Inners for the last couple of years, and we've not adjusted accordingly with our fee structure there. So we are having that in accordance with that. Our staff who've run Camp Inners have not received a pay increase. And we've, because we've had retention, we've allowed that to happen. So, and our registration has decreased. So to offset that revenue increase, we were going to have a fee increase.
These are mostly part-time?
Part-time staff.
These are part-time staff?
Yeah, this is all part-time staff. A majority of them actually are Board of Educators, who, so we have a partnership with Bonnie, who you just talked to.
Are these, the fees generally pay for the programs? You mean, are they self-sustaining with the fees, or?
All of them are self-sustaining and generate some ancillary revenue to pay for some of our other overhead costs, marketing materials, office supplies. Majority of the fee increases are in line with statewide increase of minimum wage, because that has significantly increased in the last couple of years and will continue. We've had to slide our pay scales to make sure that we have comparable rates for our staff so that they are choosing to continue to work with us versus going elsewhere. We prefer not to pay our staff who are watching our kids minimum wage.
When was the last time you had an increase on the, not on each, but in general? Because this is an increase-
We've actually been cutting, we've been cutting, either maintaining or cutting fees the last two and a half, two years. And this is the first time, because, as I mentioned, most of this is because of the wage increase, for minimum wage increase, we've had to look at that directly.
Keep in mind, the last thing we want to do is micromanage you guys over fees. We just ask the questions because we can have constituents that'll ask us. They'll call in a minute and say, "How come I'm paying this?" And it'd be nice, you know, to give them the justification. So we appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Yeah, and we're an open book, so if people ask questions, we're fine.
Any other?
I was just looking at the $350. You got 10 kids on a team, that's $35 a kid, it's cheap.
Yeah, and if you sign up as an individual, it's $50 a kid. So it's actually, it's the cheaper way to go.
All those in favor of Resolution 65, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have for right now. Come back to me later.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Roser, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. President, council members. I'll call your attention to Resolution 66, 2016, and the accompanying audit report dated April 4, 2016.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 66, 2016?
Second.
You have a second?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The Office of the Internal Auditor performed an audit of the Wycomico County Youth and Civic Center box office. The audit objectives were to gain an understanding of the box office operation, evaluate cash handling controls, evaluate efficiency and effectiveness of current practices, and to make recommendations. Scope of the audit was FY 2015 to date. We concluded that internal control was adequate to its stated purposes. You may recall that according to the standards, adequate system of internal control means that findings are subject to reservations. A number of findings, some of which are significant, have been raised. Where action is in progress to address these findings and other issues known to management, these actions may be at too early a stage to allow a satisfactory opinion to be given. Some of the findings were related to written procedures, journal entries, and interaction with county finance. Most box office processes contain robust written procedures. We recommended additional written procedures in one area. Additionally, we recommended more interaction with finance regarding journal entries and other matters. Follow-up on the findings is ongoing, and we will report regularly to the council. Upon acceptance, this audit report will be posted on the county website in prescribed manner, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Roser. Any questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 66, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
That's all I have, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roser. Mrs. Harris, good evening.
Good evening. First, we have a public hearing and approval. Actually, we have three different public hearings, but they have the same notices. So I thought for convenience, I would read the one notice and list the three different names for the three separate hearings.
You're the legal department, you tell us what we're allowed to do.
That's what I'm going to do.
Okay, thank you.
Under the provisions of Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, applications have been filed with the Wycomico County Council to sell easements to the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation on the following properties. Hurley Farms Waller Road, property located west of Delmar on Map 10, Parcel 10, consisting of 61.6 acres. Michael Stevens Coburn Mill Road, property located south of Salisbury on Map 69, Parcel 7, consisting of 112.33 acres. Philip Wells Cherry Walk Road, property located southwest of Hebron on Map 26, Parcel 105, consisting of 54.38 acres. A hearing will be held before the County Council on Tuesday, June 7, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. in the Council Chambers, Third Floor, Government Office Building, North Division Street, and US Route 50, Salisbury, Maryland, to hear comments from the public regarding these applications. Agricultural land preservation easements may be sold by landowners whose lands meet eligibility requirements of the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation. For all information concerning these applications or agricultural land preservation programs, call the Wycomico County Planning and Zoning Department, telephone 410-548-4860. Written comments or inquiries may be sent to Agricultural Land Preservation, PO Box 870, Salisbury, Maryland, to 1-803-0870. The Council reserves the right to close a part of this meeting is authorized by Section 10-508A of the Maryland Annotated Code. And as I said, there will be three separate hearings. The first one for Hurley Farms Waller Road, the second for Michael Stevens Coburn Mill Road, and the third for Philip Wells Cherry Walk Road.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Harris. Now, the first item on the agenda I had was the Winter Place Park Hunting and Farming Rights.
Did I miss?
Invited that, we'll move forward with Resolution Number 68, 69, and 70.
Sure enough, I went out of order.
That's okay.
I apologize.
That's okay. We'll do 68, 69, and 70, and we'll come back to 67.
Okay.
So at this time, we would open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 68, 2016, recommending the approval of the sale of land preservation easement with the applicant of Robert Hurley. If you'd like to make any comments, come to the podium, state your name and your address, and make your comments. Seeing none. That closes the public hearing on Resolution 67, 2016. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 68, 2016. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 68, 2016?
Should we move?
Second? Any discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 68, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing for Resolution 69, 2016, reference to sale of land preservation easement in reference to applicant Michael Stevens. Again, if you have any comment in reference to this particular resolution, come to the podium, state your name and comments. Seeing none. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 69, 2016? Second?
Second.
Discussion or questions from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 69, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. This time, we open the floor for a public hearing for Resolution 70, 2016, recommending the approval of the sale of land preservation easement in reference to Philip Wells. If you have any comments you'd like to make, go to the podium and state your name and comments in reference to Resolution 70, 2016. Seeing none. All those, entertained a motion from council to accept Resolution 70, 2016?
Should we move?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution 70, 2016 passes. Mrs. Harris?
All right, back to Resolution Number 67, 2016. Notice of hearing before the County Council of Wycomico County, Maryland, is hereby given in compliance with Chapter 22 of the Wycomico County Code and the local government article, Section 10-312 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, that the County Council of Wycomico County will hear public comments on the following proposed resolution at their regular meeting in the County Council Chambers, Government Office Building in Salisbury, Maryland, on Tuesday, June 7, 2016, commencing at 6:30 p.m. The County Council proposes to lease to S&amp;H Farms Incorporated the following described property. All that tract or parcel of land situated in the Parsons Election District of Wycomico County, Maryland, consisting of approximately 238 acres of land bounded on the north by the Baltimore-Chesapeake and Atlantic Railway, bounded on the south by the northerly side of US Route 50, bounded on the east by the lands now or formerly belonging to Oliver East Hastings, and bounded on the west by the Beaver Run Business Center, Section 1, and the lands now or formerly belonging to Virginia and North, and all that tract or parcel of land situated in the Parsons Election District of Wycomico County, State of Maryland, containing 24 acres of tillable land, more or less as shown on a Winter Place Park facility plot of the property. The above described property, having been offered for bid, and S&amp;H Farms being the high bidder, is now to be leased to S&amp;H Farms Incorporated at an annual rental of $5,551.50. The initial term shall commence June 1, 2016, and end on May 31, 2017. The lease may be renewed for two additional one-year terms, each commencing on June 1 and terminating on May 31. The additional terms will be subject to an increase in the fee by the amount of the Consumer Price Index. The property shall be used solely for the purpose of hunting waterfowl, upland game, and deer, as well as farming.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. If anybody did not get that, Mrs. Harris could repeat it. At this, at this time, we open the floor for a public hearing for Resolution 67, 2016, reference to the Winter Place Hunting and Farming Rights License Agreement. If you have any comments you'd like to make, go to the podium, please state your name and address. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 67, 2016. Entertained a motion from council to accept Resolution 67, 2016? Motion to approve, second?
Second.
Any discussion from council?
I've got some questions here.
Councilman Holliday?
In the resolution, you're saying 230 acres, but when you get to Exhibit A, it says 255 acres.
You're addressing that question to Mrs. Harris, maybe?
She wants to answer it. I've got several more, too.
Take your time.
It should be 255 acres.
Okay, so we need to change the resolution. The next one is bounded on the north by the Baltimore-Chesapeake and Atlantic Railway. That railway was dismantled back in the '70s, and those properties were sold in the late '80s, early '90s. That could be a land record delay or something, but I don't think they own that property anymore. So that's something we want to check on.
Can you repeat, which part of it? Who doesn't own it anymore?
The Baltimore-Chesapeake and Atlantic Railway. That needs to be corrected. There should be someone else registered as the owner there. That whole railway was sold, and in fact, Mr. Cannon owns part of it further to the east. I don't think you own that, but...
Well, I'm not certain that it affects the...
Is it using the railway?
The railway is no longer there?
No, uh-uh, no. It's not been there since probably the late '60s, early '70s. And the right-of-way is gone, too? It's there, but, no, it was sold by Quick Clean Deeds. That whole railway was sold by Quick Clean Deeds several years ago. That's a housekeeping item that you probably need to look at.
Yeah, I'll look into the...
The next thing is Oliver Hastings is not the owner of the property to the east. It's Olive Hastings.
Olive?
Uh-huh, yeah. Okay. There was one more thing down here. I think it's a housekeeping item that needs to be addressed that probably doesn't make any difference. Under other conditions, it says licensee, it's H, Section H. Licensees shall not use handguns on the property, but hunting with shotguns and bows shall be permitted. We've left out rifles, is that...
I'll check.
Okay.
Okay, shotguns and hunting rifles?
Yeah.
If I can interrupt very quickly, I don't know from the executive's office whether or not this is a time-sensitive matter, whether we should table this and reintroduce it at the next meeting. Does he-
I think with the necessary amendments, it's just probably, they're referring to an old deed.
Right, that's fine. I mean, I just wanted-
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe, sorry.
I've got about 10 more, no, I'm just- Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing these to us.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. I'm familiar with the property.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Joe, I'm glad you were so thorough with this. Could you do me a favor and just entertain a motion to amend as?
Sure. I entertain a motion to amend as-
As noted? As stated? As a motion to amend is-
Well, she needs to check on the property, the railway, to do that.
I mean, do we want to table it before making a motion to? I mean, can we just table it all together? Because we don't, or we can move to amend as-
Sounds to me like we should table it until we get it straight. I just want to make sure that two weeks isn't going to be a problem.
Make a motion to-
That shouldn't be a problem.
To table.
I can put this on my to-do list and-
Okay.
Table it for correction. Make a motion to table for correction.
That would be better.
Give me a second. Joe has, excuse me, Larry had the motion to table, Joe Holloway seconded. Joe has, uh, excuse me, Larry had the motion to table, Joe Holloway seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and Resolution sixty-seven, two thousand sixteen, has been tabled. That will be brought back at the next council meeting on the twenty-first of June. All right, thank you, Councilman Holloway, appreciate that. And, uh, Mrs. Harris, is that everything you had tonight?
It is.
Great, thank you very much. At this time, we, um, will move forward, excuse me, um, there is one adoption with Legislative Bill two thousand sixteen oh-six. This is, uh, entertain, um, a motion to adopt Legislative Bill two thousand sixteen oh-six, the annual budget. Asking for a motion?
Shall we move?
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion. Good.
Mr. President, I'll, uh, I'll take a stab at throwing a little wrench in the process.
You want to start? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I would like us to, um, I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget by cutting seventy thousand dollars from the County Council operating expenses, and I ask the council members forgiveness for doing this at this late moment. The County Council, as you recall, we had increased our operating expenses in anticipation of hiring legal counsel, but we didn't know the details of that or the cost or really anything. So we kind of, we put some money in there, and, you know, earlier tonight, we actually approved Resolution to hire counsel. So now that we have some details on what that might cost, I think it's prudent to cut seventy thousand dollars from that. There's no way that legal counsel is going to cost the entire amount, a hundred and forty thousand dollars in contract services that we initially put in there at the rates we were, the rates we were given. And I recognize that some say, you know, leave it in the budget just in case we have cost overruns. I think the budget should reflect spending as closely as possible, so, you know, since we're not going to use that money, and we still have ample in reserve for, no matter how much the work the, our, our council attorney does, I would make that motion to cut seventy thousand dollars from operating expenses of the County Council portion of the budget.
We have a motion to amend the Legislative Bill two thousand sixteen oh-six by cutting the council's legal budget by seventy thousand. Motion is on the floor. Is there a second?
There's a second.
We have a second? Okay, discussion.
I guess where, where do we want to move it to?
I mean, I believe it would reduce the prior year carryforward. I guess that's the term that the Executive's Office uses, so...
It would be cut and removed from the carryforward. The acceptance from the Executive's Office.
I think that's probably the simplest thing to do at this late stage, and I recognize this late, and I do apologize for that. So I, if we would have had the legal issue sorted out sooner, we probably could have addressed it sooner, so, so my apologies for messing things up a little bit late here tonight.
It's okay. Well, that's why we're here. Any other, any discussion? Councilman Hall?
Although I agree with Mr. Kilmer, it is a little beyond the last hour for cutting this. I certainly appreciate you bringing it to the attention. I think the intent of having this funding in for the first year of this program is that in case there is some excess of spending in the legis- or in the law budget this year, that we will have sufficient funds to handle anything that should come up. It may be a little difficult to go back to the executive and ask for more funds to handle some type of litigation that would happen where the council would actually litigate against the administration, and I think these funds would be necessary to stay in for this year particularly, to, just to observe. And again, at the end of the year, if the funds are still there, they'll go back into contingency.
I'd like to echo with, um, I'd like to echo what, what Councilman Hall stated. I would prefer to keep it in there just in case, so we've got a lot going on. We've got the farming industry, and there's other issues that, in-house, that need to be worked out, so I'd rather return the money at the end of the year than struggle with trying to get the funding back. This is the first time we're doing this, and, and Mark is right, if you add up the hours that we think we're going to need, we're certainly over, but we don't know if there's going to be extra work for this attorney, so I'd prefer to keep it in.
Any other comments from council?
Mr. Kramer, what would be the process if by some slim chance we did need more funds?
Well, the normal process would be to request a contingency fund transfer, which would require the endorsement of the county executive as well as approval of the county council, just as any other transfer from contingency fund that you have.
If the county executive didn't agree, would a supermajority vote substitute for that?
I don't think there's anything in the charter that speaks to a supermajority vote having any effect in transfers from contingency.
I mean, for, to do the math, we would need, I believe, to use our own legal counsel at least eighteen hours a week for fifty-two weeks a year to exhaust funds that would be left after this cut. So that, that's why I, I have a hard time seeing that we're going to use them eighteen hours a month, let alone eighteen hours a week constantly, so I understand what you're saying, better safe than sorry, but, um, you know, I still think it's a right place to cut.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll do this, uh, vote on the amendment by roll call since it is a legislative bill, just to, so we're in place, starting with Councilman Dodd.
So this is a vote to cut?
This is a, this would be a vote to amend the legislative bill to cut, yes. This is the vote to cut.
Okay.
Okay? Councilman Dodd?
No.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Joe Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Hall?
No.
Councilman Kilmer?
Yes.
Councilman Matt Holloway?
No.
Chair votes, uh, no. So the, uh, the amendment does not pass. Thank you, uh, Councilman Kilmer. We appreciate that. We all know your interest in saving every taxpayer dollar.
Doing what I can to cut the budget or try and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion reference to the Legislative Bill two thousand sixteen oh-six?
So just to clarify this, we're voting on the budget that we amended at our last work session, so this is the budget with the cuts we have made. So a yes vote is a vote for the lower amount.
For the budget as, as we recommended, yes.
Okay.
And those, uh, those recommendations are all reflected in, in the numbers here, specifically in the, uh, economic development. Does anyone have any questions in reference to that part of it?
Uh, one housekeeping measure, I think, Mr. Cannon, would you go through again the proposed recommendation for Warwick that we discussed?
Yes, uh, yes, I'd be glad to, Councilman Hall. The recommendation for Warwick at the time was to renew it from the Economic Development, um, Department, and to transfer that to, into contingency. It wasn't a, a cut as, you know, popular opinion seems to be. It wasn't a cut of that budget. It was simply a transfer of those funds from, as it was established in the Economic Development Section, and transferred to contingency, and the budget reflects that transfer under Fund Number forty-six contingency. There's a county contingency amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that's been added by the executive branch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that reminder, Councilman Hall. I did have one question in, in the contingency section, if I could. There was, it says transfer to airport of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. I don't know whether it's a housekeeping measure or not. In our notes, it was, it was suggested that this two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars would be added to Exhibit D under anticipated grant funding for the Airport Fund fifty-two. I don't recall that a hundred percent, Mr. Kramer.
Yes, that was council's recommendation, and that was the way it was submitted to the administration. Between conferences, I think, with, between, uh, PKS and our finance department, the, the action that's in the budget is the way the auditors and the Director of Finance think it should be done. Ms. Lewis, if I've left anything out of that, I think that pretty well covers it, but it's, it's the means by which the, the funding is made available to the, to the airport. And this is, and the language that's in there now is the, is the, I guess, consensus between the finance department and our external auditors.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions from any council members? The net effect, seeing? Thank, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kramer. What we'll do by roll call, we will, um, take a vote on the adoption of Legislative Bill two thousand sixteen oh-six, starting with Councilman Dodd.
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Joe Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer?
Aye.
Councilman Matt Holloway?
Aye.
Chair votes, aye. Motion to adopt Legislative Bill two thousand sixteen oh-six passes. And we're done?
I believe that's, uh, I believe that's all I have.
At this time, then? Thank you, Ms. Kramer.
I called your attention the letter from Mr. Culver this morning, uh, in which he, he proposed that the Warwick money be dealt with in much the same manner as you have dealt with it. The, the issue is then that that, if there can be a coming together of a, of a scholarship plan, that the money is available to, to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments, please go to the podium, state your name and address. You have, uh, three minutes to express your concerns.
Good evening, everyone. Ernie Culver, President and CEO of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce.
And I'm Mike Dunn, the President and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee.
We're here jointly, and we wanted to stand before you, united, to let you know that we are fully supportive of the Warwick concept, the scholarship program, and we're willing to do whatever we can do to make sure it's put back on track in an expedient manner, but in a proper manner. We try to make ourselves available to the council, as well as the executive office, to assist in any way possible with regard to addressing any concerns that you may have with regard to specifics, i.e. the internship, which we since found out that the programs already have an internship, which far exceeds the twenty to thirty or forty hours that was suggested. And then the income aspect, whether it's a single family, whether it's a household, we have worked those figures, and we'll make them available at your discretion, and we would like to move forward as, in an expedient manner as best possible.
Thank you, Mr. Culver.
And I echo Ernie, and to add to that, despite what the public has been somewhat led down to think that things are not moving forward, we've had great conversation throughout the course, Ernie and I, and we've had conversation with virtually every branch of the government, with Mr. Hoy, with Warwick, with Mr. Culver, Mr. Trossard, Mr. Cannon, Mr. Kilmer, and we thank you for that opportunity. We truly believe that this is something that's important for the community, that we, to borrow a phrase that I know Mr. Kilmer and I agree to disagree on, we think this is a game changer, and we appreciate the council, um, setting this aside into the contingency aspect of their budget, and we look forward, as, as Ernie has said, to working with you. I'm proud to say, and, Mr. President, if you'll allow me, we wanted to keep our comments short.
Sure.
Like, I'm a Y High person and proud of being a Y High grad, and we have a nice young lady who's a sophomore at Y High that also wants to come forward and, and make a few comments on the Warwick program, so...
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Good evening to you all. My name is Anaja Singletary, and I'm a sophomore at Wycomico High School. I will be a senior next year due to my Three and Out decision made recently. Three and Out is a progressive movement for sophomores to take upon themselves. You will graduate a year early and skip your junior year. There are challenges that come with this decision, such as taking eleventh and twelfth grade English, but at the same time, you'll be considered a senior and will be included in all senior activities. I have been considering a college offer to Warwick for upcoming students. Seeking scholarships is a challenge, not only to me, but also to any other student. I think it, I think it can help low-income families to send their children to college. This is the reason why most students don't think about college. What if they're not athletic or artistic? What do they do? Think about the students who are smart as ever but cannot go to college because their parents cannot afford it. With this scholarship plan, is, it is giving unfortunate students an opportunity to achieve their goals in reality. I can say I experienced my mother, my mother, go through a minor, a minor struggle, and it was not pretty. She worked two jobs and handled her business all by herself. She was independent and very strong. I would love to be independent and successful as well. I would, I want to, I want to further my education in order to make her proud. Education is the reason why people have good-paying jobs and why people are not struggling. It's the beginning of a very merry life. It's a plan for all kinds of students. Rather than just sitting around watching young children being killed selling drugs and having babies, I'd rather see young children like myself willing to take their future to the next level. Education does not stop after high school, but due to funds, it can be cut shortly. I give so much thanks to Mr. Bob Culver and Mr. Ray Hoy for introducing this marvelous plan, for believing in students and motivating us with great spirit for this scholarship. I also would like to thank Mr. John Hall, who favored the plan and explained that we are not missing any chances with it. Mr., and also Mr. Matt Holloway for agreeing, agreeing that the plan would be a great idea. As a future two thousand seventeen graduate, I find this plan extremely helpful, not only to me, but as well as my fellow classmates. Thank you for your patience and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Singletary. Any other public comments? Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. President. My name's Rick Green. I hope not to take too many moments of anyone's time this evening. I just want to compliment, first of all, our zoning and planning personnel and county for the extreme due diligence that you have exercised as you've drafted together some proposals for changes to the zoning and planning as it relates to the poultry industry. So thank you for your hard work, and we continue to encourage you to move forward in that regard. Last council meeting, I had an opportunity to read a portion of the letter from our lawyers, and that was Jacob Stotzke from Washington, D.C., a law firm made up of several former EPA lawyers. And I just wanted to highlight one thing for everyone's knowledge base that you may not have had an opportunity to appreciate, and that is this. In the proposed legislation, we're looking at some increased setbacks, and that is should be acknowledged as a positive move forward, but I would like to make a little bit of a comparison so that the public knows. We're looking at a two-hundred-foot setback from the property line for the, on the poultry operation sites, and where it involves other schools, residents, et cetera, that number jumps up to four hundred feet. That's what's proposed primarily, and we're continuing to work together and negotiate in that regard, but other communities have also had to deal with this major issue. Most of them are in Virginia or in the letter, and I will just give you some comparatives, folk. Northampton, which I would suggest may be an exception, Northampton has a thousand-foot setback from property to line or public road or right-of-way, fifteen-hundred foot from existing subdivisions or town edge districts, two thousand feet from tidal waters. Halifax County is three-mile setback from the closest existing K-Fol. Lunenburg is six hundred feet from property lines and public roadways, one thousand feet from existing dwelling schools, nursing homes, et cetera. Montgomery is five hundred feet from existing residential districts, and a thousand feet from churches, schools, parks, et cetera. And Surrey, the last, is a thousand feet from primary roads or highways and five hundred feet from secondary streets or property lines. As you see, there's five indications there of counties in Virginia that have enacted legislation, and I think what we have proposed and are working toward is admirable, but we need to move it up just a little notch. I have one more closing comment to make from that letter, and I would like to read it into the record, and it's simply this, that a recent article in the Daily Times, and this is as of May seventeenth, included representation from a DPI, the Delmarva, Delmarva Poultry Industry Representatives, and a DPI's recommendations included a four-hundred-foot setback, which is the minimum distance from a chicken house to a residential home. Four hundred feet is their recommendation. That's the distance for athletes from home plate to the outfield fence at a ball diamond. They're also recommending a hundred-foot setback from the property line to the poultry houses. And... and that is the minimum already required under Maryland law and is also the law here in Wycomico County and being abided by. We have also noted that there is a, in our opinion, a sense of DPIs, a little bit out of touch with the practices that are going on in other communities. The document offered in 2015 appears to address traditional poultry farms with 30,000 broilers on 40 acres and not 300,000 birds on 20 acres or less. Council needs to consider the whole of the public record, scientific literature, and the entire community's needs. We are moving in the right direction, and again, we thank council for their willingness to work with us and members of Zoning and Planning Committee, and hopefully, we will come to a balanced position in this regard, and the end result will be for everyone in Wycomico County to be healthy and moving forward in a prosperous manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
My name is Bill Massey. I live at 6797 RV Road. I'm a lifelong resident and property owner in Wycomico County, and it looks to me like we've got three groups in the CAFO disagreement. I'll call it that. We've got the poultry farm community, we've got some agitators, some professional, and then we've got people in the middle of the road, middle of the group, and that's the ones that I'm concerned for, because they're getting fed a lot of hype. It's not true. I agree with the DPI setbacks that we voluntarily offered up. My father started raising poultry in Wycomico County in 1948. He died at 86 from an accident, not from a lifetime of being in poultry houses, which some people would make you think would kill you. Are the farms getting bigger? Yes, they are. Economy of scale has dictated that and all business, but they're also getting better. The conditions in the houses, the environmental conditions, tremendously better. When we talk about CAFOs, we need to understand what a poultry CAFO is. Poultry CAFOs are dry-litter systems under a roof. We don't have manure lagoons like hog and dairy CAFOs, totally different animal. So, when we go forward and look at these regulations, we just need to be sure that we use real facts, common sense, and not hype. And when I talk about hype, I want to show you something. You know, a few meetings ago, there was a picture that was handed out of this, where somebody said, "That's a new poultry house being built right behind the Salisbury Christian School. You would think it's right outside the fence. You could jump over the fence and hit it." This is what the picture really looks like. It's on the other side of the Route 13 bypass, and that's all I'm saying. We need to use real facts and not hype. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Good evening.
My name is Jean Morris, and I'm here to present some petitions, and I'd like to read what the people sign, what they read when they signed their petition. Dear Wycomico County and County Executive, there are a number of known health effects from exposure to industrial-scale poultry operations, such as asthma, neurological impairs, and mental stress. To address these impacts, please place a moratorium on the expansion of existing poultry CAFOs and on the sightings of new industrial-scale poultry houses close to residential areas, schools, playgrounds, churches, and health facilities until you pass a protective local audience to address the public health impacts from industrial broiler productions. I'm turning in approximately 150 signatures. These represents people to add to the people that have already signed petitions, and you will get more. Please listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Any other public comments?
I forgot to say thank you to the whole entire county council for voting and keeping the scholarship plan initiative alive. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Singletary.
To the council and the meeting, to all of you that are in the room, I'm Bishop George J. Copeland of 1808 Jersey Road. I've been a pastor for over 40 years in this area, and also, I'm the Vice President of the Watchmen with One Voice Minister Alliance. I want to thank you. We were here once before, having to do with the elementary school, and I thank you so much that we got that taken care of and a new school going up, and I'm excited about that. But what I am concerned tonight, and I'm speaking behalf for our Vice President, for our President and other members of the Minister Alliance, and we are concerned about the health issue. That's the thing we're concerned about. If we can find a way that, in the midst of the poultry industry, make sure that the foul smell and all of the allergy things that causing people who have asthma, which we have, some people in our congregation who have asthma and different type of disease that they're dealing with, and then we feel that during the spring and summer of the stench that's in the air, that really works on a lot of people, respiratory problems and other things, and we certainly would like that you would consider that, if we can make sure that those things are covered so that when you come into our neighborhood or community, you won't come in with holding your nose or putting on a mask because of the smell that's in the neighborhood, and also consider the health, even of our children, the new school, and it would be a shame to have such a beautiful school and kids getting sick because of not properly having, the environment being properly taken care of in our area. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Bishop Copeland.
My name is Talana Watson, and I am the wife of the President of the Watchmen. My husband could not be here tonight, so I'd like to take this opportunity on his behalf to follow up to what Bishop Copeland has said, in that one of our major concerns is that of health issue, but we have some other concerns also, because we want it to be known that we are fully in favor of economic development in our community. We're fully in favor and understand that we need to have jobs in our community. It is not our desire that people would not be able to earn a living. Our main concern is with the safety and well-being of the community residents, and I know we are also business owners, we're funeral directors, so being in the ministry and being funeral directors, we have a lot of opportunity. We encounter sickness and death on a regular basis. One of the things that I remember when I was in mortuary science school, one of the discussions came up about cancer, and we were told that on the eastern shore, we have one of the highest rates of cancer in the nation, and yet, I've never heard anything about a study being done to actually address that issue of why the cancer rate is so high in our community. Being a citizen of Maryland, I don't want to think that it's being taken for granted that we are across the water, across the bay, and therefore, our lives are not as valuable, because we all have a vested interest, we all want to see our families flourish, and I know we work towards retirement, and I'm working very hard, and in my retirement years, I want to enjoy it, I want to be healthy, and I believe we're all in agreement with that. And the question in my mind is, for the assurance of everyone in our community, I would implore the council to consider that it would be wise to have a study done to see if there would be any negative impact on our health, a study done by a source that we're all comfortable with and that we can trust. Not only is there health concerns, our business is on West Road, and we understand that one of the potential locations for a CAFO is on Northwest Road. The other issue for us is traffic. Where our funeral home is located, our sign has literally been hit three times. Monument sign twice, the sign identifying the business three times. The first time only deterred because it was a cement sign, and it was only by the grace of God, someone coming around the corner, that they did not run into the funeral home, and someone was working on the roof at the time. And I think about the fact of what it's like now with the traffic that speeds down West Road and makes that curve, and it was only yesterday morning that our mailboxes were knocked down yet again because someone was speeding around that curve. So, I'm thinking this would only worsen the situation if we have an increase of traffic due to additional business, such as a CAFO on Northwest Road. But there again, I just ask that we would not be in such a rush to do something expediently and not consider all the potential hazards or benefits to our community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Any other comments?
Good evening, council. I'm John Moyle, Dr. John Moyle from, let's see, where am I, 2495 Collins Wharf Road. I'm relatively new, I've only been in Wycomico County for three years now. I also am concerned about the health on the lower shore. I'm going to take a different angle, though. I want to talk about the lack of health facilities. You know, we've talked about, we've pointed out cancer, the health and all, out that out here, and I find it highly ironic that this report from John Hopkins ignores several very important facts. We have low education here, we have low income here, and we have poor access to medical facilities and doctors, all of which are positively correlated to poor health. As we look at these things, we need to look at them in a logical, scientific point of view. As for chicken houses, they are bigger. Why are they bigger? Well, tell me one thing in our society that isn't bigger. I agree with your petition. There's some great health things, but I can take that exact same petition and say everything you said about our mega schools, our mega hospitals, our mega malls. What thing do we have in our society today that isn't much larger than it was years ago? These things are important to look at as we go through this. We talk about putting up all these buffers around chicken houses and all that. I suggest you make people that move into county put up a buffer between them and the farmers. Only makes sense. Those farmers are going to stir up dust, they're going to use chemicals, they're going to use these things on their farm. Put a protection up then. Then if a farmer turns around, decides to become a poultry grower, he puts up one, too, you've got double the buffer. Why put all the onus on the property owners, the ones that are already there? Anyway, that's my thoughts. I come from an outside area, so it's a little bit different, so anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Moyle.
My name is Jane Brogan. I live at 1011 Here and Court, Salisbury. I'm a lifelong resident of Wycomico County, and in fact, worked 30 years for the county. In 2006, I retired from the county, and as a retiree, I received a medical benefit that went along with my retirement package, that a certain portion of my retirement would be, my medical benefits would be paid. Recently, we, as retirees, received a letter from the Human Resource Department that was hard to understand, very confusing and unclear, about some changes that are going to take place in our coverage. A number of the retirees have checked into the prescription plan coverage and found that it's going to cost one individual at least $2,000 more out of pocket for the year, and we can't use our local-owned pharmacies, as I understand it. Yesterday afternoon, there was a post put up on the blog, as I understand it, and I don't frequent the blog because I don't frequent the blog. I don't think that's a good way to communicate with your employees or your retirees. That being said, the Personnel Manual that was written in 2003 stated that the county council must approve changes to the retirees' medical benefits. As retirees, most of us live on a budget and a fixed income, and the change will be very detrimental to us and life-changing, if not life-threatening, to some. We are asking that the council please consider all aspects of this before a decision is made. If we can give $100,000 to support our children with tuitions, I think we can take care of our retirees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brogan. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes our... Okay. While we have the time, I'd like to recognize Delegate Carl Anderson in the room. Delegate Anderson, thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Monica Brooks, 2902 Red Fox Drive, Salisbury, Maryland. I didn't get to hear comments earlier, so I hope I'm not repeating anything, but I just wanted to say that I'm very disappointed. First of all, that my daughter who goes to Salisbury Christian has these new houses so close to her school, but I would really like for the county to be, as I've said before, please be considerate about the locations of some of these things and the fact that these fans are not necessarily being filtered and things of that nature that are being happening so close to where our kids are. I'm not even going to talk about the health perspective because I'm not a medical physician, but I'm talking about quality of life as well, thinking about, I could smell the landfill, and I'm about a couple of miles from the landfill, and I could smell that sometimes, and being even closer to these houses on Northwest Road would just not even make me want to live here. Also, I want to say that, as a person who's always enjoyed politics, I'm a political science major, did an internship on the Hill, and one of the things that deterred me from pursuing politics at that time was just the cutthroatness that was taking place amongst the people that were to serve here, and I was wondering, is there something that happens to people once they take office? There's some kind of drink they make you drink or a pill you take that alters your persona to make people make decisions or to do things that are not necessarily the reason they were elected for? All of you are elected to meet the needs of your constituency, which is vast. It's huge. I can even imagine all the different people that you have to serve, but what I'm reaching out to you is for things that I've seen, that it looks like some of these things regarding our differences of opinion have become personal. There are people that I know that have been attacked or reached out to on their jobs, lost their jobs because of their stance about these chicken houses. It's not a coincidence when you have people that didn't even know each other before this thing took place, and you have people within that group that have been targeted, that's disappointing to me. This is the same thing I saw on the Hill. What I'm saying today is, this should not be. Just because we have a difference of opinion on particular things, it should not be personal. You are not placed in office to be that type of person. So, I'm not going to say any names or anything of that nature, because I'm not the type of person to just throw stuff out there when I don't know the specifics, but I do know specifically things have happened, and it's disappointing. This is not the way I raised my daughter, to look at this country to be a place of freedom, where people are free to express themselves. If I have an opinion about something, I should be able to freely say it. If I want some... If I want something for a quality of life for the future of my children, I should be able to say it and not worry about being personally attacked. And I'm not taking this tearing for myself. I'm talking about people that the day before this whole controversy happened, maybe they were just your neighbor or something like that, but this should not become personal. And maybe you guys should take a look into some of this stuff and take a look at yourselves, whoever you are.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council comments?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. It's a large turnout, and it's very much appreciated. Also, I do want to thank everyone that supported Mr. Taylor. Glad to see him here. Sorry to see him leave, but he's a busy man, and I think that meant so much to him, so I appreciate everybody that was behind that and involved in that. I just want to make a comment about something I read in the paper the other day. It said that I wanted to have more control over who received scholarship money and, I don't have my glasses on, and who was entitled. I never said that. Matter of fact, I'm for education. I've got a master's degree. I worked hard on it, got it two and a half years, got a 4.0. And everybody that I talk to, I encourage them to go to college. I don't care how old you are, go to college. And I am not against the scholarship. We are just looking for data. Does it work? There are a lot of people saying that they don't want to give money out to people that aren't paying into the system. And I know economic development, I know what Mr. Culver's saying, that eventually it will pay off. We want to see data that says that. We are not against it, and maybe in the next meeting, we'll get some results.
Thank you, Councilman Dodd. Any other council comments?
I'd like to mention, for those who don't know, I thought the three in the back would mention it about the West Salisbury groundbreaking, which will take place this Thursday at 9:00. So all those interested could come out, that support this school. It will be built, and the groundbreaking takes place Thursday at 9:00.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Comer?
Well, I just, I want to say thank you, everyone, for coming out, too. And I see folks from Warwick here, and I understand we're going to be revisiting that at some point. You know, we got tied up with the budget process, and it's been an interesting budget process this year. And I, you know, we've had a request for $9 million in new spending over the past two years, and that, to me, is something that is unsustainable, and so I'm looking forward to next year, seeing if we can get a better lid on this increase in spending. You know, we cut some money from the budget this year, not as much as I would have liked, but we did some, and so that's why I supported the budget. But it is dissatisfying to have this council increase spending by this much over the past two years. And I recognize that there are, there's catching up to do from the recession, and I recognize the sheriff's department catching up with their salaries and with equipment. But going forward, I would hope that we can recognize the lessons of the past where, you know, spending was increased pretty dramatically between 2003 and 2008 or '09 when revenue was coming in, then we had the recession. And I wasn't on the council at the time, but I know some were. And there were some tough choices, I know, that had to be made about cuts because the spending level had gone so high previously. So, you know, most people know I'm kind of, you know me personally, I'm kind of a pessimist. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, there's going to be, you know, at some point, whether it's, you know, two years from now, five years from now, we're going to have a time when our revenue drops again, and we are setting ourselves up in a bad position. So I don't, I don't want to be raining anybody's parade here, but I just felt I needed to express that and express my discomfort with, you know, I, I don't think I've done a good enough job in helping to keep control of spending. And I know some people say it's not the council's job to cut spending, but I do think that when we have budgets to decrease spending by that much, it is our job to cut spending, and it's in the charter, and that's what we do. And if people don't like it, that's, that's fine, that's a difference of opinion, but we, a lot of us were elected as fiscal conservatives, and I, and I don't know if we're living up to that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Comer. Councilman Hall?
I will make a comment. We, we passed a very aggressive budget this year, and I think it's all in our best interest as a citizen. Since 2008 recession, we've had a lot of ground to make up, and we certainly have made it up to our employees, I think. And now we have some new challenges that we have to look at, like the poultry houses, like the retirement issue for our county employees and education. And I think we have to look at those very aggressively for the coming years. We know they're going to take some commitments from our people in our community, and hopefully, these are our next challenges that we're looking at now that we've resolved this adoption of the new budget, and we're looking forward to them.
Thank you, Councilman Hall. Any other council comments? Seeing none, I would just reiterate, I'd like to really thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's nice to see a full room, and we do appreciate that, you know, when the community's taking part in our, in our democratic process, it's always nice, and we do listen, and we do appreciate that, that, that input, everyone that spoke and everyone that bothered to take the time to be here and listen. With that being said, then, I would like to entertain a motion from council to adjourn so that we can go into a closed work session. Does that move? Second? All those in favor? Pose. Meeting's adjourned. Take a five-minute recess. Thank you.